The City of Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Meeting is now in session. Today is Tuesday, August 11th, 2015. It is 6:00 PM. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Let us pray. Heavenly Father Jesus, we thank you for this wonderful day that you have provided for us. We thank you, Heavenly Father, for the many blessings that you bestowed upon each one of us. We ask Heavenly Father Jesus that you bless this council tonight, that you give them wisdom, that Heavenly Father Jesus, that they make the greatest decisions that affect this city. We ask Heavenly Father Jesus that you be with this great nation that you've given us. Lift it up, Heavenly Father. We know, Heavenly Father Jesus, as each one of us comes to you, we'll give you the praise and thanks for it all, as you're with this council, with this staff, and each resident of this city. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Council Authority Member Janine Tucker.
Here.
Council Authority Member Leanne Jones Cruz.
Here.
Council Authority Member Cal Campbell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Darlene Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here. Conflict of interest: any council authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Seeing none, we move to Item 2, Public Comments. At this time, members from the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the City Council LRA Board. Do we have any public comments?
Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Ramon Bermudez from Roselle Avenue. I have a couple of things that I come up within the last two months, and there's been no resolution to it. One has to do with a place that burned up here in the corner of Third Street and Highway 108, if you want to call it that. And it hasn't been any cleanup on the side of the alley. There's been the ashes still there, a whole bunch of burned up stuff right by it. In the front, they just put some cover-ups, and it still looks ugly. It's been over a year since the burning place. Four months ago, I called different people and talked to different people, including the man who was the owner of the business itself, and he said that Mr. Patel, who is the owner of the place, or the land, had received the money for the insurance, for what he understood, and that he didn't do anything because he's crazy, and that he's lazy on things like that. He don't care. And I was wondering if I went to the so-called office over here, forgot the name on the head, where you have to make these people to do the cleanup and don't be affecting the other businesses that are next to it. So many of us stopped going for some time during the last year and the beginning of this, to like the Carriera River Bank, to like Panaria, which is a bakery, La Esperanza, and then to the Fiesta Party place. It's three small businesses in there, and they get affected by it. And when the wind came up, you should have seen all of these burned up pieces of paper and stuff, and it didn't matter that I'd come over to the enforcement, that's the name of the office, to enforcement, because I had talked to somebody in there. Unfortunately, the person hasn't been there when I come over to the office. I had left the message. And I don't see that if the City of Riverbank as a whole, all of you are representative of the City of Riverbank, and don't do nothing about it. I want them or another in the past that was quieted down because it wasn't related to that supposedly. Well, today it is related to that. If it has been over a year, and you don't care what happens to those places that are on business right now, and they're still open, and they're still trying to drive, and they stopped driving because of the fire right next to it, and because customers stopped coming, then there's three businesses less that eventually you're not going to have there. I ask you, I beg of you, I'm not demanding yet, but I beg of you to please do something about it. Get with the owner of that place that is affecting the alley as much as the three other businesses next to it, and as much as putting a sword in the whole city, that it can be called whatever name you put on it. It's a sword to begin with. I thank you very much.
Any further public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar.
May I, if you'd like, I can respond.
Okay, go ahead.
I certainly agree with Mr. Bermudez's comments in regards to the Cervall Building. We actually have confirmed the contractor has been hired to demolish the building. They're waiting for the asbestos to be removed. We agree, though, this has taken a very long time. Our understanding is there's been multiple insurance companies involved, and that has delayed the process significantly. But yet, we have had contact numerous times with the property owner, expressing the concerns that have been communicated to me both at the dais and privately from the council, as well as from the public. So certainly do appreciate Mr. Bermudez's concerns.
You mentioned earlier some type of a date that they had.
They had one date that they had set aside, and then that date slipped. And so there has been, you know, we've gotten information that they were moving forward. It has gone very slowly. It is something that is private property, and the private property owner is under control of that. But the city's frustration with that process has been communicated.
Do an introduction.
Yes, I'd be happy to. Mayor, members of the City Council, this evening Mr. Helenan was not able to be with us tonight. And so we have in his stead Mr. Mike Lyons from the former Churchill White. He's recently become affiliated after retiring from the city of Series.
Thank you, Madam City Manager. I apologize for being late. We're living in Manteca now, and I misjudged the traffic terribly. So kindly accept my apologies.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Moving on to the consent calendar consisting of 3A wave readings, 3B, approval of July 28th, 2015 City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Minutes, Item 3C, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, endorsing the designation of SR 132 Yosemite Boulevard as the John Muir Highway and an alternate scenic route to Yosemite National Park. Item 3D, acceptance of Morel Road pavement resurfacing and rehabilitation project and authorizing a file of notice of completion. Item 3E, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, authorizing the city manager to enter into a purchase agreement for the acquisition of real property and appropriating up to $10,500 in general fund reserves for said purchase. Item 3F, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, adopting pay schedules, compensation plans for January 5th, 2015, January 8th, 2016, and July 8th, 2016. Do I have any discussion, any items need to be pulled on the consent calendar?
I think I have a conflict with Item 3D. I think in the past, I know this is just the acceptance of the project, but I think in the past I had to remove myself from that because I live close to that project. So I probably need to do so for this part two. Maybe I can get some clarification of that. But I think I was, I had a conflict when we did the other parts of this project.
Okay.
I would agree that it would be appropriate to not participate and declare conflict.
No others? Any member of the public wish to comment on any of the consent calendar?
With Item 3D, I hope that they do pay attention to the lighting that I have brought to your attention before. It's very bright at the corner.
That's not part of this project.
Why not? The Morel Road pavement resurfacing and rehabilitation, the rehabilitation should include the lighting of the place.
It does not in this project. Sorry, sir.
Is not that?
No, it does not.
What about the sign on the corner of Morel and Roselle? Because the pavement went all the way up to the corner of Roselle, and the sign on Roselle is raised. It would be good to change it. Is that included?
No, sir.
Neither one? How strange. I thought that was part of the rehabilitation project.
Any further comments on the consent calendar? All right, bring it back to council for a recommendation or consideration.
I'll move that we approve the consent calendar.
A second.
We have a motion to approve and a second to adopt the consent calendar.
Council Authority Members Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes, with the exception of 3D.
Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
And Councilmember Jones Cruz, would it be appropriate to clarify that you abstained from Item 3D?
Yes. I abstained from Item 3D.
I'm going to play havoc with the agenda. I'd like to move Item 6.1 up front and hold a discussion on the status report and update on the steps necessary to expand the sphere of influence for the City of Riverbank, including processing an application with Stanislaus County LAFCO. Was there any objections?
Mayor, members of the City Council, this is an item that has been discussed a couple of times. Essentially, at the strategic planning session back in March, provided an update for the City Council in July. And then this evening, we have an opportunity to have Mr. Anderson go through some detailed options with the council for possible expansions of the city's sphere of influence. This is an item that is important to the city's future to evaluate what are some opportunities and issues that we might need to address as planning goes forward for the North County Corridor, as well as in anticipation of the growing interest in development in the City of Riverbank and surrounding areas. So this evening, we have our consultant, Mr. John Anderson, here this evening to provide the overview for you.
Thank you, Jill. Members of the City Council and Mayor John Anderson, J.B. Anderson Landry's planning 139 South Stockton Avenue, Ripon, California. Here tonight, working with you folks specifically on a strategic goal and objective that council had set relative to expansion of, or investigating the expansion of sphere of influence. You know, the city hasn't done this in a long time. And contrary to the article that was published in today's Modesto B, this is not, you know, a land grab by the City of Riverbank. It's certainly a process by all means. The city hasn't dealt with modification to their sphere of influence in quite some time. That's reflected in the staff report and certainly part of a municipal service review that LAFCO recently prepared and ultimately adopted for the City of Riverbank. At this point, staff has asked for this workshop because there are a number of different options that we have heard about that we could be studying, you know, as a city, as to where the sphere of influence should go. You know, as the council knows, and most of the folks in town know, that we're currently working on a specific plan for an area called, for the lack of a better term, Crossroads West, which is about a 380-acre specific plan area. That is an application that is being funded by the developers. That funding agreement came to council, and we're working on the specific plan and infrastructure to support it as of right now. In order for the City of Riverbank to annex that property, the property needs to be within a designated sphere of influence. That action requires approval from Stanislaus County LAFCO, and the municipal service review that they have on record would need to be modified as well. So what council had suggested is that we might want to take a proactive role and to take a look at the sphere of influence that we currently have to take into consideration this plan area, as well as potentially some other areas. Whether or not you go to the full general plan area or whether you do something much smaller is certainly up to this council and direction that you'd give us as staff to proceed. The process is very cumbersome, very time-consuming, and filled with all kinds of facts and information to be presented to this council at some future date to specifically select one particular option. The staff report that I prepared did have an error. There was an additional option that was thrown in at the very last minute. And quite frankly, there may be some additional options that are talked about tonight by your council that ultimately are be part of a package that staff will bring back to you for consideration. So after having said that, I'll kind of go through the PowerPoint presentation that I have. So the first option that I've talked about is the Crossroads West. This is about 380 acres. Includes land that, you know, primarily is north of Clarabelle Road, and then, of course, would be westerly of Oakdale and goes about halfway, if you will, towards Coffee. So this is, again, an active application that we're currently working with and certainly an option that this council could consider. Option B has to do with the discussion that we had relative to the North County Corridor, and I'll show you a couple exhibits on that and how it would affect circulation on the east side of Riverbank. But primarily, this is included as an option to promote industrial growth and development in and around the Riverbank ammunition plant or Riverbank industrial complexes, as it's known now. And also to allow or afford us the opportunity, forward the City of Riverbank the opportunity to secure an urban interchange at or around Eleanor as part of the North County Corridor project. And I'll show that in a couple exhibits in a little bit later. Option C would be simply saying, hey, you know, we have the Crossroads West project, and we have this area east of the Riverbank industrial complex that we'd like to work on. So let's look at SOI expansion that would include both of those properties. Option D is a little bit tricky, and it includes an additional area which is all, it's north of Topeka, but it's also in an area that is part of a, I want to call it a growth buffer area between Oakdale and Riverbank. This is something that, over the last 15 years or so, has been kind of set aside as a community separator between Oakdale and Riverbank. There was an action back in 2011 by the Oakdale City Council to re-up that 10-year agreement. As far as we can tell, City of Riverbank hasn't taken that action. But I don't think the desire has changed to recognize and to honor that prior commitment. So there will be an issue associated with that. Option E is a little bit different because not only does it go up to Highway 108 to the north, but it goes beyond Eleanor from 108 all the way down to Clarabelle. And please notice that we're not talking about, you know, ever encroaching into the south into the city of Modesto, which, again, was referenced in the Modesto B article, which is completely false. It's never been our discussion, it's not in our general plan, and certainly is not part of any discussion that staff or council has had. And then Option F, quite frankly, would be to the full limits of the general plan that was ultimately adopted by this city council back in 2009. You know, it's not uncommon for a city to expand its sphere of influence to match the general plan boundary. The council back in 2009 chose to stick with the existing sphere of influence, adopt the general plan, and then to expand the sphere of influence when new applications came forward for annexation and development. And that's kind of where we are right now. That's the sphere that we have and that we're currently working with. As it relates to the North County Corridor, you know, we've all heard about, have been involved in many, many discussions on. You know, it is obviously moving forward. Environmental documents, we're told, will be released now, I guess, in August or September. We'll see them when they're released and get a chance to comment on those. But as you look on the east side of town, we'll have a full interchange at Claus and Clarabelle. But as we go further to the east at Eleanor, the current plan is to have either an underpass or an overpass as a rural interchange on the North County Corridor, which causes quite a bit of circulation problems for Riverbank long-term on this east side, unless we're able to promote this area for industrial development. And we're told by Stanislaus County staffers that they would, if that was the case, if we had a master plan approved for industrial or urbanized development in this area, that they would consider an urban interchange at or around Eleanor to the North County Corridor, which is significant for circulation concerns for the east side of Riverbank. So again, this concept drives, I think, really the need, you know, for the city to look at, you know, at least, you know, this eastern expansion area, you know. And then, of course, the other is dealing with Crossroads West area. Now, there's a number of probably options that we haven't really thought about. I mean, again, we're trying to honor this community separated with Oakdale. And pretty much the map illustrations that we have would say that if we wanted to go beyond Eleanor, we would have to do that south of the Patterson Road. That's kind of the cutoff. So the areas that would be north up to SR 108 that I've shown in Option D wouldn't be in compliance with that document. So that's something that we would need to think about. So I know there's been some acreages that have just kind of been shared generally with city staff, but there's more research that's got to be done relative to the acreage, the type of land use we're talking about, and evaluation before council would make a decision and set staff on the path to filing, physically filing an application with LAFCO for expansion of sphere of influence. And maybe I should probably take a minute to talk about that. What does that mean? Well, you know, in order for us to submit an application to LAFCO for sphere of influence change, you know, we're going to have to have a discussion with Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors, and then we're going to, they're going to look at it, and they're going to make sure that it's reasonable and logical. That'll be part of the filing that they'll make for us. And then LAFCO is going to want to make sure that we have a policy or a series of policies relative to ag-lan conversion before they'll consider any modifications to our sphere of influence. Part of that process, of course, is making sure that we have a municipal, excuse me, make sure that we have an updated municipal service review that matches the sphere of influence that we're suggesting and the growth horizons that are within that sphere of influence that we're proposing. In your staff report is the sphere of influence as recognized by Stanislaus County LAFCO and the growth horizons as currently recognized. So there may be some internal modifications as to what lands would be considered for 0 to 10 years worth of growth versus 10 to 20. So that's going to be part of the effort that we'll be presenting to you probably in about a month or less. The mayor wants it done in two weeks. But in a month or less, as it relates to giving us official determination as to what the council would like to do, you know, with this sphere of influence change. Does the council have to do anything at this point? No, you don't have to do anything. You know, the application that we have moving forward right now, the Crossroads West, you know, part of their process, they can easily include, you know, expansion of sphere of influence as well as the annexation as an action by LAFCO. It would require the same county agreement that I referenced. It would require ag mitigation, which is what I've talked about, and it would also require an update to the municipal service review. We're very fortunate that as part of the 2009 general plan update, we also have updates to our master plans for water sewer or storm drain that match the general plan, which will enable us to demonstrate to Stanislaus County LAFCO that we have the services to provide or we have a program in place to administer services to this expanded area. That's obviously very, very critical, any decision that's made, anyway. So that's kind of staff's presentation, discussion. There's obviously options that we presented here, and I'm sure there's options that perhaps your council and the mayor may want to talk about tonight. Obviously, there's a number of folks in the audience that may want to talk about this as well. It is really the first step in the process of annexation, and that would be to expand the sphere of influence, to direct staff to update the municipal service review. And then, once LAFCO takes action on that, or some form of the application that's presented, then we'd be in a position to consider annexation of properties by council action, and then back to LAFCO for official vote of annexation. Again, it's a very laborious process. Their steps are laid out. Mr. Mike Lyons, representing Series, has been through this a number of times. He knows exactly how difficult it can be working with LAFCO and others, so. The environmental document that we have for the general plan, in the general plan EIR, totally accommodates what we're proposing here with any sphere of influence change. Again, it's at a much higher level. When the projects come in, like the Crossroads West Pacific Plan, we'll have very specific environmental analysis to represent that property, and that will accompany its annexation request, which would ultimately go to LAFCO for consideration. So, I mean, you can, now's your chance, I guess, to ask questions of me and, I guess, open it up for public discussion. But this is a workshop, and we're not asking the council to take any official action. We're asking you to give us some feedback and to have this open dialogue through this agenda item.
What we do, I'd like to have Mr. Neal come on up and explain the LAFCO decisions made when he was, well, he showed us a picture earlier. He had around here and...
Charles Neal, 2312 Rio Verde Drive, Riverbank, California. Yes, I was honored and privileged to be a council member and a mayor of this city. In 1988, we took a sphere of influence to LAFCO for 1,360 acres. We were taking it all the way across to Coffee Road and as a sphere of influence. LAFCO just flat rejected in 1988 and said, no, too much, you unable to handle that. In 1989, I was a member of LAFCO and we took the same project back to LAFCO. And LAFCO said, okay, what we'll do is we'll give you 630 acres, and that's what you have in Crossroads now. And then you come back and show us that you can handle 630 acres, you can develop that, you know, and provide for the services and everything, and then you can change your sphere of influence to go out the other 630 acres to Coffee Road and square it off like that. And that's what happened in 1989, and that was LAFCO's decision. Well, the Crossroads project was in the sphere of influence from 1989 to 1997 when it was annexed. But yet, when that was annexed, they never really went back to LAFCO and asked them to extend that sphere of influence, and they haven't today. But it's still in part of the minutes, and it was still, and I realize, you know, that's been a number of years ago, but things change, but yet decisions to, Riverbank did an outstanding job with Crossroads. So therefore, LAFCO should honor the commitments, which they don't really have to, but the commitments that they made back in 1989 to extend that. And, you know, I would think that my preference would be to ask LAFCO, to take, to LAFCO and ask them to extend the sphere of influence to Coffee Road and then take it all the way down. That's to extend this sphere of influence. Of course, then you could develop what portion there that you want to develop and how you'd want to develop it. But I see tonight with all these different options and everything, that's what I really wanted to speak about was the fact of it is back then, in those years, how LAFCO had made their decisions and what they based it on and how, you know, you expect people to honor those things. But I'd like to say that when you're talking about your sphere of influence and you're talking about your growth, maybe we should consider something, you know, here on this east side or back in this area because even though we fought hard back then, as you can quite well see, that's in the Sylvan School District, and it's not in Riverbank School District, but we, you know, and I know school district boundaries and they've got another union school district boundary out there somewhere or another that goes, that would cross down through there. But if you took that down and squared it off and took the whole acreage in and everything, you could bring in that trailer park that's out there and get a better provider services to them. But if you do this east side over here, it is in the Riverbank School District. It will help the city of Riverbank School District. It will help the district, you know, they can handle their students, then, and all school districts need, you know, they need that average daily attendance. And by losing that whole block there to the Sylvan School District, you have quite a thing. I mean, you know, you have kids in Riverbank going to the Modesto school system. And then a lot of times you, if families don't have their kids in a school district or don't have anything that to bring them downtown, they don't really never, never come downtown and or get to see Riverbank. The downtown area, the places that we have down here, and so it never really has the opportunity to have the growth it needs or to expand and have the services because, you know, people will say, oh, well, you know, I turned left and head on over that way instead of turning right and coming downtown. But if you have your kids in school district or you have something that attracts them to Riverbank, you know, to the Riverbank High School basketball games and football games and all, then you've got a better, you have a better community. It's, you know, it's a combined community. Sometimes I tell people when I'm speaking to them or talking to them, I said, you know, I feel like, I feel like the community that I was raised in, you know, we have a canal that separates this area. Back there in the south, you know, they usually had railroad tracks that separated, you know? You either lived on the lower side or the upper side. And like now, you know, you have a canal that separates and the kids on that side's in one school district and the kids over here is in another. But thank you very much, and if you proceed with that and I can be of any help, I have every piece of paper that was ever, went through my hands, I've still got it, and I would be more than happy to go to LAFCO. And also, there's still some, Marjorie's still there and she was, huh, she retired? Oh, okay, well, I knew she was there not long ago, but anyway. And Ron Freitas is still around. He's not working, but he's still around, you know, and remember some of those things that was, and the decisions was made and why they were made. Thank you very much for your time.
John, could you put back on the North County Corridor portion of that?
The whole section?
Yes, please. Okay, with the North County Corridor, one of the reasons why I'm pushing to get this sphere of influence and annexation near Eleanor is that we can have an urban interchange, and it can open up traffic movement on the east side of Riverbank. We have two new housing developments being initiated and they're moving along, and if they have a way to get to the North County Corridor and do their movement where they have to go, less congestion going through the downtown, less congestion through the already established congested roads. So that would be a plus. Because of annexation and because of sphere of influence does not mean development, does not mean that we're going to make someone do something that they would not want to do. They own their property and we believe in the property rights of the owners. So that is one of the reasons for the push to get at least to Eleanor so we could have an access to the North County Corridor instead of going through town, trying to get down to Claus Road to access it or to Oakdale Road and access it. One of the things we didn't discuss was going just to Coffee Road for their sphere of influence, which might be an option that we could discuss. Sphere of influence, for me personally, I don't want to do our entire general plan. Going to McHenry to the river is a heck of a lot. But if we had the sphere of influence to Modesto, we could prevent somebody who would want to jump Clarabelle for their expansion. That's also an option. We're not going to make those decisions tonight. But I'm interested in hearing what the council has and also the public has on, as we move forward on this. Timeline?
Mayor, as I said earlier, I mean, the timeline on this type of process is not something that's fast. You know, there's obviously this discussion, open discussion, consideration of the various options, some of which staff may not even consider, as you've just suggested, going all the way to Coffee is an example. That's not an option that's up here, but certainly an option that could be studied. Council needs to, you know, adopt a resolution, which in that resolution gives staff the authority to proceed with a sphere of influence adjustment and update to our municipal service review. That process in and of itself is pretty much updating the MSR or the municipal service review, and that can take a couple months. That has to be brought back to the city council for action. It's not something that normally would send to the planning commission, but it's something that the council would act on before we physically file an application. So, you know, it could be, you know, I don't know, six months at least before we even get something to LAFCO for consideration for SOI expansion and consideration of update to the municipal service review. And that would again require approval by this council before we move to LAFCO.
With a delay from the North County Corridor Environmental Review Impact Report, that could be a benefit to us because they still have their public discussion before the final selection. And that's what we need to do before the final selection.
Yes, yes.
Also sticking out there is Mesa Verde School, sticking way out there with no favorable roads and no sidewalks going to them. I can see that the Riverbank Unified School District Head is here tonight, but sticking a school way out there does not make sense. But if we were to help protect the kids going to that school, if we don't jump Eleanor, because that's our boundary between Oakdale and Riverbank, that buffer, we could provide services and good roads, sidewalks, as we develop to that school, hoping that they don't build another one further out. But I'm opening up, these are my thoughts. I want your thoughts, too.
I have a couple comments. I think, and you guys have heard me say it before, that when we're elected to the council, we make decisions that long outlive us, and I think this is one of those decisions that may long live, outlive us. And I think it's pretty important that we think about the future and get things set up for future councils that come behind us. And I really feel that it's very important that we, I would like to see at the very least option C, which is where we do both sides. But to get the one on the east side, I really think we need to move on that and get that rolling because of the North County Corridor issues. I feel pretty strongly about that, and this is one of those things that I think we need to have all of our ducks in a row and get things set up so that we can get that urban interchange out there. I think if we didn't have the urban interchange out there, we're just tying up things that I think in the future would be a huge headache for Riverbank, and I think we're setting ourselves up for disaster quite seriously if we don't really seriously think about moving forward and pushing for that at the very least. Crossroads, Crossroads, the one we have right now has saved Riverbank in my eyes. We wouldn't be as well off as we are if we didn't have it. And again, thinking to the future, I think we need to set our city up for things to come for the future, and I think both of those are vitally important, both of them, Crossroads West and the east part of this. So that's my thoughts.
Anyone wanting to go for the entire general plan, planning area? I mean, we could do that. I mean, that's part of our, LAFCO knows about it. I was, I got a hard lesson one day by Supervisor DiMartini. We were trying to protect the property known as, what is it, Dutch Hollow Farm to Tulip Farm, the access to the Clarabelle. And I went to speak before the Board of Supervisor and he says to me, it's not in your sphere of influence, why do you give it? Darn. And he was right. If it's not in our sphere of influence, we have no control. We have absolutely no control. So I'm not a proponent to go past Coffee Road for Riverbank at all. But if we go to the entire planning area, again, if we never even develop past the west side of this new project, at least we'll have control over development from, or prevention of development or encroachment by the city to our south that loves going after remote areas such as Slida.
I'll be brave. I'll step out there, yeah, I think we should. I think we should go for the whole enchilada.
First of all, I agree with the mayor that I don't want to go all the way over to McHenry. Coffee Road's as far as I would like to go. Usually the sphere of influence is approached that often by councils, so I would say we need to look at doing what we need to do now because it may be many years before we do it again. Likewise, I'm kind of wondering what the population projections are in 2030 and how big we're going to be. I don't recall, but I know there's some figures out there for it. I support going to the east side. The mayor brought out a very good point. Traffic patterns in this town need to be approached. We need other outlets. If you don't believe that, drive around this town at different times. So I support it on the basis of that and also what it would do for us industrial-wise, which would be a benefit to the city economically also. So at this point, I would be in favor of going over to Eleanor and that little piece of land, I'm trying to figure out why Oakdale wants to put up such a fight about it, but...
It's a buffer.
Yeah.
It's a buffer.
Anyway, I think that could be included too, even since we did agree to it, and I would support going over to Coffee because we don't know totally what the future holds in line for us. If we go that far, we don't have to do it again. It's done. If we don't use it for a long time or it's redone, that's up down the road. So I say let's do as much as we want to do now so we don't have to revisit it, and there's a lot of reasons we gave tonight for doing it.
The population projection by the great state of California says that 2050, Riverbank should be between 40,000 and 50,000. So that really takes away a lot of the small-town feel. If we only go to the sphere of influence of the current development and not do that again, we won't be approaching that 40,000 by 2050. We probably won't be approaching, we'll probably approach 30,000. So there's bonuses and there's also very negatives if we don't get what the state wants. And the negatives are funding from the state, not punitive, but housing and community development has, would project a lot more severe housing for us in the lower and low-income housing. And if you read, if you can believe 50% of what is written in these papers today, that there is a severe housing shortage in the state of California. And housing and community development and others in the state are suggesting that the Central Valley be the relief valve for the coastal communities. So as we're looking at our sphere and our plan, we have to carefully consider how we want to approach and what we want to develop and how far our sphere is going to go out and not put a burden on future council. I would like to go to McHenry and protect us, but I also could see that that could be a negative at the same time, not knowing what the state would impose, but then again, what would LAFCO impose with policies and changes to policies. Darlene?
I do believe that we should go from Coffee all the way to Eleanor. All the traffic that we have on the east side by the RIC, it's crucial that we have access. Just, you know, looking at the traffic today, it's only going to get more and more because we are expanding in the RIC. People are using that as a thoroughfare right now and with more development coming, I really do believe that we should open up that area and have access to it with the North County Corridor. Also, as was stated about the elementary school, I do believe in safe routes for school, for children, for walking, for access, and that's definitely, as we said, needed out there. North County Corridor is really, really crucial in this area. We've got to have access on and off for our city, for our businesses, for our homes, and if we don't, we're in big trouble. So I just hope that we get there. And I think that, again, just what everyone else has said, as far as growth for our city, there's nowhere else, we don't... there's nowhere else, we don't have, unless we do some expansion, we don't really have enough area for us to meet the population needs and growth for businesses and also for our homes. So, I say go with the suggested sphere of influence. Let's go for it.
I agree with all the comments made so far. I think it's just a matter of how far we want to go on the east side. I think we should definitely go to Coffee and no further at this point in time on the, on the west and go at least to Eleanor and maybe possibly including the buffer as well on the east. I'd like to see us do that.
The, the buffer, I got, I, I have the dubious honor of being on LAFCO and, and Oakdale just got their annexation approved, and in that they had the 2001 agreement, which shows that the, they're not going past, too much past Crane Road, and they're sticking to that 2001 agreement. And that, they say, has been extended 2021. So, going beyond Eleanor, we would have to negotiate with Oakdale. Not that it's a binding agreement, but I would like to have some type of buffer between Oakdale and Riverbank and not be the first one to encroach.
And that would just be, you know, for the lands north of Patterson Road, not south of Patterson Road? That's what that illustration is, north of Patterson, not south. Just so you know that.
Okay. So, that's south of Patterson Road, that doesn't, that doesn't include, that, that, does that include the school? It doesn't?
No, the school's north of that.
Yeah, so that doesn't, so we can't put the school in our...
No, it's in the buffer.
In the buffer. And it has an Oakdale residence, or address?
Address. Yep.
Boy, I'd ask for a change of, at least if I was in the Riverbank Unified School District. Doctor Camp? Yes, sir?
The only reason that that school is out there is because many, many years ago, the Riverbank School District had the opportunity to purchase that 10 acres of land out there. And that's why it was, it was land that the Riverbank owned at the time in order to put an elementary school in. So, they didn't really, the bond money, they didn't have enough to purchase more land, so they put it in that area that they owned the property in because it was, it was, it was an expense that they didn't have to cover. And they, some of they expected Riverbank to be out there.
City Manager Jill Anderson, members of the, of the council. I appreciate the history lesson, this is, this is really helpful for me. Obviously, I moved to the, to the, I joined the Riverbank Unified School District in 2011, and that was one of the first things that a citizen asked me, "Why would we put a school out there?" And I, I didn't know the answer truthfully then, so it's helpful to hear. I know Mr. Neal was on the Oversight Committee with Measure P that helped us to build Mesa Verde Elementary School out there also. So, I, I, that's what I thought, it was probably for land, cheap land or inexpensive land essentially. Albert, I, I just want to say, you know, thank you for the conversation. All our school district has just to be included in some of the conversations, because obviously whenever we talk about expansion, that, that could have a direct impact on our schools. So, that's the reason I came tonight, just to see what the talk was about. I know Mr. Anderson visited our, our school board meeting, gosh, it's almost a year ago now, right, and, and our city manager too, just because our board's very interested too in what, what may happen. And obviously Mesa Verde appears to be our furthest east high school, or furthest east school. We're cognizant, we, we have to look at all the movement, because remember, our school district, it, it, it goes even further east, obviously. Remember, we used to have a school out there in Milnees, and so we're way out there too. So, our boundaries actually go way east and way south, you know, of Crane and Clarabelle. So, we're way out there, our buses still run out there actually to pick up a few kids. So, we're cognizant, and, and the more I listen to this conversation, more it makes me think, maybe I need to be paying attention to all of the municipalities and what the conversations are. Because reality, if, if Modesto City ever decided to incorporate, tried to incorporate that area out there southeast of Clausen Clarabelle, that would be our issue as well.
That would be your, still your school district.
Right, right.
You can't break up the special districts.
Right. I'm saying if there's any ever growth out there, it creates a, either way it's issues. Declining enrollment is an issue and expanding enrollment is an issue for us. We just have to be ready for it so we can plan accordingly. So, that's the reason we just like to be at the table, to just understand what's going on, so we can work with our demographers and, and there were some big changes made in, in the funding for schools in the last year or two. In 2005, there was a bond passed by the state of California, the voters, that helped communities like us to build new schools, new construction. I think it was the Leroy Green Act, and it, it essentially provide, could provide 40% to 60% of funding for new schools. And that, that bonding authority right now is sunsetting, so right now the state's not giving that contribution. So, really, any new schools that are built has to be with the local funds or local developer fees, and I know the governor has some talk going on right now about the, rearranging the developer fee component, but it's talk right now, and there's a strong coalition. In fact, the Coalition of Adequate School Housing is pushing for something to go on the 2016 ballot in order to help to build schools, you know, essentially, that's, that's one of it. So, we just have to be at the table more than anything else as we're talking about some of these major shifts for our, our city. So, thank you.
Thank you, so you will be. Any other comments?
My name is Darryl Daniel from 334 Atchison Street, Riverbank, and I was at the meeting many years ago of the one of the buffer, they were describing between the, the two mayors of Oakdale and Riverbank, I don't remember who it was at that moment, but really describing that the two mayors in the city council for Oakdale and Riverbank did not want this to be another LA where you just don't even know what city you're in when you move, when you're going from one end to another area, meaning that there should be a buffer area of, and I think that's why they built even that little ranchette area that's out there, as, almost as a forest buffer kind of a thing, where it's a ranchette kind of a area that's out there. I don't know, I forget what the street that's on, but it's right in the middle between Oakdale and Riverbank. And why I'm describing that is that, you know, the, the school that's out there, I mean, it's, yes, we should be building anything we can in the industrial area to promote that, especially if there's going to be the highway that's going to go around it, even though many of the farmers and different ones did not want to, you know, sell the land and stuff like that, they've been there a long time, they want that rural area. And I think even the school, elementary school will get a education from being in a rural area and not so much surrounded by a bunch of homes. You know, there's nothing wrong with having cows and, and what this whole country's about, or whatever, you know, just animals of any type. Round a school, you know, I think that's part of the education of schools. The, the talk about building and building, you know, you have to really look at is, you know, do you want to, are you building this, I, to me, I think F is a failure kind of a deal unless you're just trying to, just trying to put it into an area of that, putting your elbows out there, saying, okay, nobody else, that you have control over and nobody else touched my area, you know, like Slida or Modesto or Oakdale and stuff like that, you know, where you're trying to big that. At the same time, why I'm describing that is, I think of steady growth, but a controlled growth is a good thing. We should be taking some lessons from Escalon, who actually controls their growth. They have X amount of, of growth that's out there, they're only allowing so much. Now, I'm not saying we should do the exact same as theirs, but we should learn a little bit from them and see, you know, you can actually say no to building more and more homes. Being the fastest-growing city in California, as you were so many years ago, came with a penalty. You, all of a sudden, you, oh my gosh, you have no fire, no sewer, no this, no that, we got to jack up our rates, we got to do this, we got to do that, and all of a sudden there's, you go almost into a panic so many years ago. And then when you became the fastest-growing, you just build, 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 and that was the boom, and that was the bang, and that was a crash. And it's almost, I call it a starting of a crash. The, when you build crossroads west, you're going to have to really look at that, if you want that and put a very controlled cold growth, and controlled growth doesn't mean that you're going to build something every six months. I mean, that's not controlled growth. You, you should even wait for another council, another council, another council, you know, building so much, so much as you're going on and stuff like that. You really need to do, look at that as, you know, what are you going to do? You need a buffer between towns, I think that was the thing. It looks like there's going to be no buffer between Modesto. I guess they're going to knock out, you know, their, Modesto's building as fast as they can toward Riverbank, it looks like, as they're knocking out as many almond trees and walnut trees as fast as they can, looks like, which is sad, you know, I mean, what is, you know, I mean, we are, this area is nothing but, we grow almonds and walnuts.
15 seconds.
So, yeah. So, I mean, that's what we have to do, we have to look at, we are agriculture, so, and the only way we can become agriculture is through that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does this have to go to the Planning Commission sometime down the line before you make a decision after it's all done, or where do they, what role do they play in this? And the other question I have is, when they did the general plan update, I was very much a part of that. They had town hall meetings, which you really need to do at this before you decide what you, how you're going to grow. And one of the most important things that they, one of the top points that they came out of those meetings was that the people, the people that live here, that work here want the small-town character to stay. They want that preserve, they want the buffers, they want the ag. And I would really strongly suggest that you do that again and listen to what the people want before you make a decision.
Good evening, Ramon Bermudez, 6261 Roselle Avenue in Riverbank. In the so-called sphere of influence, there was an article in the paper, Mr., what is a land grab compared to, you want to add so many acres to a city? Isn't it pretty much the same in different wording? Why do they insist on coordinate AG land? You minimize the importance of agricultural land, should be the whole world, so you can see the importance that we have in the whole state of California. Agriculture is one of the main things that have driven California in the last 50 years. I'm not saying the last 10, I'm not saying the last, in the last 50 years or so, that's the growth of California. They have the best, the best grapes. Go and look wherever you want in California. They have the best strawberries. They have the best peaches, just right out here by Coffee Road where you want to grab into. And I call it a grab of the land. You don't make that importance on the agricultural land, you want to cover it with payment. I don't know how far you can go on Morel between Oakdale Road and Coffee Road without going, driving Tijuana-style. You have to be avoiding them paths. Whether it's county, whether it's Riverbanks, up to that little complex of sports, whatever it is, is not fixed. You want to have streets like that, you go ahead and expand all you want and get rid of agriculture. Charlton Heston had a movie a few years back, Soylent Green, where you ate little bits of, like yellow type of bits for food, where you had, that was your vegetables and that was your fruits. I don't know if anybody remembers or ever seen it, but it really made a big impact in my life. Do not destroy your agriculture, the little bit that is left. Do not expand to where there is agricultural land. You don't say about nothing if it is going to Morel, or if it is going to Patterson Road, or if it is going over the river. You're not saying nothing about that, I didn't hear anything. I don't see it here because it's too small. But please, do not stop on calling it agricultural land, because that's what it is. Don't go with AG because it's less important, less important, less important. If you want to grow, fill in those housings that you have off Oakdale Road, put a sign on there, what's the name of, Novi, and Oakdale Road, it doesn't even have a sign. For two years I've been asking you to put a sign in there, they don't pay attention to what I say. And that's why a lot of people, like five or six of them, don't want to come to the city council meetings, because they see me on TV and they say they don't pay attention to what you say, you say, "Did you see those signs up there?" Well, no. "Do you see that changing of the lights?" No. "Do you see the light that you were asking for on Patterson Road and Howard?" Well, no. You're right. Either they're going deaf or they don't think it's important. I ask you to please, don't go through the school near Eleanor, it's going to be pure hell. Go and pave the roads, put sidewalks, show that you are an urban city on that side of the town. It's horrible what they have to go through in the rainy season. It still rains in Riverbank, by the way. It might be a little bit, it might not be all you want, but it still rains. Thank God for that. But go and do something about what you can do now, not about 10 years from now, 15 years from now, go about something that you can do right now in the next five, five years, not 15. In the next three years it can be done. You did a beautiful project on Roselle Avenue, you did a beautiful project on Patterson Road, in so many of the streets in Riverbank. Why not start with those projects in the streets that are going to affect the families and the children that are going to Mesa Verde School? We appreciate that, thank you very much.
Any other comments?
I'm Jerry Sanchez, I reside here in Riverbank, and I just wanted to say, obviously, there's not very many people within my age group, but one of the reasons that my wife and I decided to purchase here in Riverbank was the fact that we were excited about the growth that we observed in Riverbank. So, I just wanted to say, obviously, there's been some comments that are made that appear to be more negative in connotation towards these plans, but I know as for myself and my wife, we're really excited about this growth in Riverbank. I grew up here, went to the school district, RUSD, and, and I'm just excited about what's in store and what's, what I foresee in the future of Riverbank as far as, you know, more, more stores, and obviously that includes big box stores and more housing. That's going to open up, obviously, you guys are aware, a lot more opportunities for community members here, more resources for those that are in need. We're, we're not going to be able to get that money to fix sidewalks unless we open up to development and, and housing and stores. So, I for one, grew up here, plan on dying here within, you know, the city limits of Riverbank somehow, or sometime, but I'm...
Sometime in the distant future.
In, in the distant future. But I, I know I'm definitely excited about these propositions that are before us community members at this time, so I just want to say awesome and great job to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? I'll bring it back. Comment, the question was on the Planning Commission, what is their involvement in the development of the sphere of influence?
Mayor and council, so from the, my perspective as your city manager, this is a major policy decision setting forth the, the future of the city, and that the Planning Commission will certainly would be briefed on that and can, and look and provide some, some comments on that, that really the decision is yours as the council's elected members to represent the community. And that is why resolutions have to go forward through LAFCO and so forth. They would be involved once the general direction is given for, for review and feedback. They would be involved once the general direction is given for, for review and feedback. And, and certainly, they would be evaluating the development projects that came forth subsequent to any annexation.
Yeah, I think that's an important distinction there. With the Crossroads West project specifically, the, the planning commission will play a very active role in reviewing all aspects of that specific development to, to deliver what the expectations are of this community, to the expectations of Mr. Santos and others that we deliver schools, that have facilities that they need to service the community, that we have parks that are expanding for a regional basis, and then also, we have connectivity with, with our residents that are existing, plus future residents to not only the commercial, but also the recreational amenities that this community has. What they built with Crossroads Development, the 680 acres, plus what we want to do in the future. So, there's a lot of plans in the works that the commission will have an integral part in review and administration before it's brought to your council for final action and expectation for annexation. And that's obviously some distant time in the future, and there'll be a very specific environmental review against that as well. So, this is a policy decision. They will be apprised, but basically, this is a city council action. Thank you.
And we're not making a decision tonight. We will continue studying and make an informed decision with you on where we want to go in the direction of the city, how much we want to increase our sphere, either for protection or for, you know, future council's action, or not, if we want to take the risk of not going further than the current proposed projects and see where that lies in the, in the future while other cities have to expand as much as, you know, as well as we. On the east side, there's two developments happening right now. They're moving along at a good clip, and they should be starting here shortly, if I'm not missing, shortly as a, as a relative term in government, as I found out. So, we'll continue studying and take a look at what we've talked about and, and go from there. Our items here tonight is just to receive the report.
And would the council like us to come back with maybe a, a more focused look at some of the things that we've talked about tonight, which would be maybe going to Coffee and then looking at the Eleanor boundaries and just really focusing on, on those options?
Yes, please.
Okay.
And also, when we do the annexation, some of the areas that are surrounded by the city that have not been annexed, when we do the annexation, that we need to annex those areas.
In terms of the?
Their terminal and the others.
In terms of that, kind of that unincorporated county area in the middle of the town.
And because, you know, as it was commented about, we can't take care of our roads. They're not our roads. It's the counties, and the county doesn't care. When the school was built out there, I heard one, one person say, "We're never going to touch the roads going on out there." So, we have to own the roads before we can do something.
And that's actually an interesting point is going forward the annexation, that the area that is currently unincorporated, while the council's fully aware that it's not within the city limits, it is, it is in our sphere of influence, but it is not in the city limits, and therefore, it is, is a responsibility of the county. So, for those in the audience who may not be aware of that, that is, that is why that area is, is, looks very different than the rest of the city.
Politely, politically put. My goodness. Okay.
Thank, thank you.
All right, moving on. Item one of 4.1, with my glasses. Second reading by title only and adoption of proposed ordinance number 2015-013 of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, amending Title III, Administration by repealing Chapter 37, Emergency Service Organization and Functions in its entirety and replacing it with the new Chapter 37 of the City of Riverbank Code of Ordinances.
Mayor, members of the city council, as you may recall, a full staff report was provided on this item at the last city council meeting where it was introduced for first reading. This evening, we are just recommending a second reading and adoption.
Are there any comments from the public they wish to make on item 4.1? Seeing none, I bring it back to the council for comments and/or recommendation or action.
Motion to approve item 4.1.
I second that motion.
We have a motion to approve item 4.1 in a second.
Councilmembers Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 5.1, public hearing, continuance of the public hearing to consider resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, approving and adopting a five-year capital improvement plan, CIP, for fiscal year 2015 to '20 of the City of Riverbank.
Mayor, members of the city council, this item was publicly noticed, and therefore, it is our recommendation that while we'd like to continue the thorough discussion of the proposed capital improvement program, that to provide an opportunity for the public to comment through the public hearing this evening if they had planned to be here to talk on that item.
What that means is that we have no report. So, since it was publicly noticed, it can be discussed. If you have a comment or input into our CIP, I'm opening the hearing at this time.
On the ADA, I would like to know is, do you have influence of discussing with Caltrans of Atchison Street? Was this strictly everything excluding anything to do with the Highway 108? Does that make sense? Because a lot of times you describe a lot of things on Highway 108 is you guys jump away from, you know, like, you know, that's Caltrans only. But are you able to at least communicate with Caltrans describing things like that on different ADA? I guess some of it they might be working on right now, I'm not sure. I've heard different things on that. Also trying to figure out who's, it's, I guess trying to find out Caltrans number, I guess the best way, describing different things online. The city did, was able to fix one part of my street, my curb going into my driveway, but they weren't able to fix the north side because that was, that was the Caltrans section, as they called it. And so, even though the whole thing is, I'm still in Riverbank, so it doesn't matter if it's, it's still Riverbank. So, thank you.
Any further comment? A closed public hearing. Although we're not going to take any action today, do you have comments on the Caltrans?
Yes, and it can be frustrating on occasion for, for us as well, because there are certain areas going through our city that are Caltrans-controlled, and they've made it very clear to us that they do not want us working in their, their right-of-way. And so, while we have a couple of situations where we've worked out sort of mutual aid, in general, they want to control all improvements and projects. In addition to that, if we should do work that is in the Caltrans right-of-way without their permission, then we absorb all liability associated with that. And so, that is why it gets kind of, it can get confusing. In regards to the fact that it is in the City of Riverbank, those are our projects that would be funded and controlled by Caltrans. The capital improvement program that we'll be bringing to the city council at the second meeting in August are those projects that would be funded with City of Riverbank dollars and controlled by the City of Riverbank. We would not be proposing projects that were in the Caltrans right-of-way. However, be happy to talk to Darrell in regards to a contact number at Caltrans, and we do have regular communications with Caltrans to communicate the city's concerns and issues as they come up. So, it is, that's been something we've really been working on over the course of the last year, year and a half, is to, to build that relationship with Caltrans to get more immediate response. In fact, have a meeting with them on an issue later this month, so.
And we've already had two meetings already this year with the director of Caltrans, and we'll be having a third one later on this month concerning 108 and certain aspects. One being a sidewalk in front of the trailer park just to the north on Patterson Road as you come into the city from the, from the west. Second one would be access to the CVS Shopping Center, where they blocked it off at the eastern end of the CVS Shopping Center that would alleviate a lot of the U-turns going in and around, which are very dangerous. So, we'll, I don't know what the results of those meetings will be, but they will be conducted later on. And to give you an example of how fast Caltrans works, is in front of the Veterans, I mean, the veterinarian hospital on Patterson Road where they just completed that buildup, that was five years in engineering design. So, they move fast.
Five years.
So, and anyway, however, we are in constant communication with them. We would like to have a lot of areas fixed up in, on Patterson Road, 108, excuse me. And if the North County, if the North County corridor is approved and gets built, they will relinquish 108, and we want to have that 108 that will be a benefit to us and not have it in the state of affairs that it currently is. So, we're working with them, and they know that. So, we'll, we'll keep talking with them and trying to come away with adequate resolutions. Okay, that being said, there's no roll call vote on this one, correct?
There is, to continue it.
Oh, to continue it, okay. All right.
I'll move that we continue the public hearing to the next regular city council meeting on August 25th.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to continue, item 5.1 in a second.
Councilmembers Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, item seven, staff comments, item 7.1.
Mayor, members of the city council, I'll start off with staff comments in that we do not need to have the closed session this evening. I did put it on as a placeholder, just in case, but there are, there is no news to report in regards to the closed session. Also, too, earlier this evening, I made comments in regards to the Serval Building that I was going to have Donna Kenny provide to you at this point in the agenda, but since that's already been provided, I will hold off on that. And so, I'd like to start off staff, staff comments tonight with Maricela Garcia, our
Good evening, mayor and council members. Just like, would like to take this opportunity to invite all of our residents to our next Budget Advisory Committee meeting, which is tomorrow night here in the city council chambers at 6:00 PM. One of the items on the agenda will be the proposed water and sewer rates that will be presented to council for consideration at the August 25th meeting, so I hope that people will be able to attend. In addition, we currently still have a vacancy on the committee. Applications are available online as well as in my office in the city clerk's office. Thank you.
Thank you.
And to wrap it up, I'd like to see if it's Patrick, our Director of Parks and Recreation.
Mayor, members of the council, just to let the community and everyone know that since school is in session now, we've changed our pool hours. So, there'll be Monday, Tuesdays, and Thursdays from 3:30 to 5:30 PM, so that way people can swim after school. Wednesdays, we are open from 5:00 to 8:00 PM during Farmer's Market, and we have free swim. So, I know we had a good turnout last week. We're having Friday night, family nights, so hopefully, families will come out, and that's from 6:30 to 8:30 PM. And then we're going to open both Saturdays and Sundays. So, what we want to let people know is what we do kind of this time of year is the more people that attend the pool, the longer we stay open. So, as long as people are coming and we weren't being open, we'll stay open. So, hopefully, everyone will come out, enjoy the last few weeks of summer. So, thank you.
You're not done. How did the barracudas do?
They did great. They are way better than Patterson. We have almost as many swimmers, and they, it was awesome. We have the best swimmers.
Very good.
It was a very, very good year, so.
Excellent, thank you.
And that concludes staff comments this evening.
Okay, thank you. Council comments, Councilmember Jones Cruz, please.
I just have two items. I just wanted to thank the folks that went and volunteered for National Night Out. Chief, thanks for not leaving me on the street corner this year. It's awesome. And Mayor, we had a great turnout, and I just wanted to thank everyone for, for their volunteering time, and it was nice to see neighbors and, and folks out that evening. Last thing is, school starts. You've heard, Modesto City Schools started on Monday, and Riverbank School District starts tomorrow. So, please be aware that there's a lot of children, families, bikes, buses out on the road in the mornings and afternoons, so just slow it down and beware of those folks heading back to school. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell, please.
It's like to encourage everyone to remember that we are still very dry, and the fire season isn't anywhere near over, so please be careful with your fires. If you see anything, notify the fire department right away, because it seems like every time I turn on the TV, three new fires have broken out somewhere in California.
Councilmember Tucker.
I want to thank and appreciate Mr. Anderson for the good presentation tonight. As always, he does a great job, and it's very helpful, much appreciated.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
I, too, want to remind people that school is back in session, so please drive safely. And I'm looking forward to planning our third citywide annual Walk to School Day, which is part of Safe Ross to School. Thank you.
Thank you. I have some comments to the city manager. We need, have a more reliable phone system. Having the outages that we have had are getting to be more noticeable and more frequent, and that I believe that we need even before the midterm review, at least some type of plan for a new system. Currently, it's failing, and it's, it's not professional, in my opinion. Secondly, Father Glenn is having, without permission, in a conference in Modesto. I'm unable to attend, I believe it's the 17th of September. I would like one of our council members to, to attend. This is trying to prevent human trafficking, and it's very important. This is a series of, of summits that are coming from the south of the Central Valley going to Sacramento, and we're part of that. And he asked me if I could attend, and unfortunately, I'm, I'm engaged with the personal, with Next thing.
What time is the event?
I believe it's 1800. Let's go, it's about 2100. We have a planning commissioner vacancy right now. I believe we have a couple of applications, but I encourage everyone to take a look at where they want, you know, some of the, the new planning projects, you know, inputs into it. Planning Commission has a, a very real job to do in ensuring that the, the projects are high quality and meets the standards within the City of Riverbank. We're still talking with Environmental Committee Review, and one of the things that have just come up is that we're doing such a great job of recycling. We're eliminating our solid waste down to 75% of it was 15 years ago. What that does is that that reduces Cal Recycle's income that they were counting on, so now they want to raise our tipping fees from $1.40 to $5, and take a dollar a ton out of our county and give it to Southern California for their projects. So, we're fighting that right now. There's no support in most of the cities, except for Southern California. And- And I, I would prefer that Cal Recycle, and this is what I'm pushing, and you guys can talk to me about it, push it down to the counties to do the recycling. If the counties feel that they need to increase the tipping fees to, to do the projects of like batteries, recycling, some of the other type of recycling, getting the solid waste out of our landfill, then they make this decision locally. If they need to do a dollar a ton for a project such as a digester or something like that, they make it locally, not depend on California State to make a policy decision that affects us locally. So that is my position, and I'm on that, that committee. If you have other ideas, please let me know, and I'd be happy to, to sit down and discuss them. With that, although we have no closed session, it is noticed, item 8.1, Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code 545956.9 Alpha, Nameth Case Barnum Construction Inc. versus the City of Riverbank Court of Appeals of California, Fifth District, Case Number F058692, and Case Number F05659499. If anyone wishes to make comments on this closed session item, of course, we'll probably not have any information for you, but you're free to comment on it. Saying none, this city council meeting is now adjourned. Thank you. Have a good evening.